Sarah was gonna join us on Teams.
Yeah, so you just have to connect her on your computer.
How're you doing?
I'm good.
You got it there, sure. Okay, you got it there, sure.
Oh my God, thank you!
Yes, we'll some table it.
I love it!
Or continue with you.
They open the public hearing in the table.
Okay.
Hey, would you...
Thank you, I like these steps of them.
Oh, you mean the...
Is that going on the wall there?
We might have to be.
Say Cory.
Do you think if I'm asking...
It's okay if I...
If somebody says, you know. Go, what?
Do you mind if I put items 12 and 13 on the consent agenda? There's no changes. Your second readings.
Just to do what with them?
Put them on the consent agenda.
Yeah, let's go through them one at a time. Otherwise, we should've done that earlier. I don't wanna go changing that right now.
Okay. On the future, though, do you just wanna throw those on consent? If there's nothing new?
What's that?
Do you wanna throw second readings on consent in the future?
If there's been no changes, I'd say that's fine.
Oh, okay.
As long as there's no changes on it.
If there's no changes.
Right, reset it real quick.
Items here on the TV can go much for you?
Yeah. How about that?
Pretty sure you're saying, you're saying comments will hold true.
Yeah.
For the second day.
No, it's not happening, bro. You just have to...
It's showing record on the... Forgot to record the layout back there, but I can't get it to land up here. So...
I'll see.
Whatever you press, yeah, it just started on here, so it's connected.
So it is recording now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll give it a try. Mine's done.
If you give us just a second, we'll...
All right. Should check and see if Sarah can hear us. Brenton, oh, she hooked in with yours or mine?
I'm not logged in yet.
They'll let you take it, otherwise... I get all the feedback.
I was going to turn mine on mute and everything, because if it's by yours, the microphone will pick up more.
Okay.
By you, but... You, are you on that one?
I'm on there, but I'm muted, and I've got the speaker shut off, just so I...
Okay.
And the microphone's off. Otherwise, we get this wild feedback loop going on in here. Okay. I unmuted the microphone.
Sarah, I can hear you.
There you go, Cory. You should be good, Sarah. If you unmute, you should be good.
Okay.
And then I'd put volume three on yours, 'cause I turned mine all the way off.
Okay, so if you're all the way off...
Yep.
Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep. The rest of you guys here are okay?
Good.
All right. Well, let's get the show started. We're late. Call the order and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which is the republic of the free, and to the common good.
Undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
All right. Well, we got everybody here tonight. And we'll go with the regular agenda. We've got one change to add. We're gonna add an 11B. And that is for Water Improvement District 2020-7. Jim's got that one. Right, Jim?
What?
Other than that, that's all I know as far as additions and changes, so...
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
With said changes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Chelsea made a motion, Jeff did a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Uh, consent agenda. Did anybody have any questions on this? It's pretty much boilerplate. Some bills came in for the different improvement districts. Jim, was there anything other additional or anything on there?
No.
Comment wise, okay.
No.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion, Jeff does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Council minutes from last meeting. June 21. Anybody have any... Find anything wrong with that?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the meetings, the meeting minutes.
All right, Naomi makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, so we have the minutes from the special meeting that we had with the city council and the planning commission. I think those all looked in order too, unless you guys have any things changed last...
I'll make a motion to approve the... Minutes for the city council and planning commission meeting.
Okay. Jeff made a motion. Can I get a second? Naomi does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, time for public comment. Anybody got anything they wanna chat about tonight? Jim? Wanna come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, please? And where do you live? So we have it on record.
My name is James Dew, and I live at 10501 72nd Street South.
Okay.
And they just put a road in south of my place. And, uh... I'm wondering if the sign doesn't seem to be correct. I put up a street sign. And neither one of them, I think, are correct. I don't know if you've already ordered a new ones or whatever, but just to bring it to your attention, the 72nd Street, the sign reads 170th Avenue South. So it's not even an avenue. It should be 72nd Street. And then the other one is, my address is 10501. The neighbor to the south of us is 10601, so it should be 105th probably, rather than 104th.
Yeah.
Avenue South.
Yeah. We'll bring those to the contractor's attention, 'cause the contractor is...
The one that ordered this.
Is the one that's supposed to have them all signed, but we'll verify with interstate of the accuracy of them.
Just here about it, Jim, so...
Yeah. I haven't had a chance to talk with Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you so much.
I sent you a picture earlier, so yeah, it's... I always thought, you know, streets and avenues, so, well, I guess there's avenues and avenues now, so...
I thought your picture was a quiz. It was a quiz, and I am hoping I passed. But I found a different concern, so...
All right.
Yeah, but thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Okay, anybody else got anything you wanna chat about? Okay, I will close public comment. We'll move on to number eight. Lucas, you got this one. Got some stuff we gotta transfer around, huh?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I believe there's a memo that goes along with this and a bunch of deeds, so I'm assuming that the council read all of this and know exactly what's happening. Uh, so I can be brief with my explanation. Basically, throughout the years, uh, some property has been transferred between the park board, not between the park board. So all this does, this memo, is gonna clean out, uh, I think nine properties is what it ends up being. Uh, it shows eight deeds. Uh, but basically... The park board went through and found these lots that should belong to the city, lots that, uh, should belong to the park district, so, um, pursuant to this memo, that's what this does. At their last meeting, they approved the transfer of all these. I think it's easier to just do it in one fell swoop. Uh, so in essence, I would just ask that the city council have a motion to, uh, approve the transfers that are listed in this memorandum.
The stuff from, uh, does it look like Jack's... Development company that just never got transferred to the park board, or how'd that work out?
It was done on the plat, but it, it never made it to the county, so we're just gonna do a deed and get that recorded to make sure that the county recognizes that the, the transfer should have occurred. I think the issue with, with that one was that it wasn't listed on the, the map part itself. It was just listed in the, um, description. And so because of that, I think it just got missed. And it's typically what would happen is, the developer would make the city or park board aware of it right away, because specials and taxes are due, so they would still be paying that. So I'm not sure if they have just let that sit, or why there hasn't been more of a push to get it transferred to the park district.
Okay.
Something I just wanted to add is, this has been a project that Onsted Park District and the city staff have been working on for, I'd say, six to nine months roughly. Um, just trying to get it all cleaned up, going through identifying these different lands to make sure they're, uh, owned by the correct jurisdiction or entity. So, uh, these are the ones that we went through with both, with the, with the park district to make sure they're clean and correct.
So with that said on your comment, does that mean that the, uh, specials have been paid up on those lots from Mr. Blair's company?
I'm not sure, um, where the specials are with that one. Uh, my assumption is that...
Two or one?
With Metal Lake Park.
For any of them.
Okay.
Either one. I'm not sure where they're at.
Okay.
I'm guessing for the, um... I know for sure for the, for eight, specials haven't levied yet, so it won't be special, so that one. And that's just a small little lot for a sign, so that's gonna be very minimal. Uh, but Metal Lake Park will have specials on it. I don't know what those are. But those should've been levied already. And I'm not sure what the, what the mark just draws on.
Okay.
But the park district, um, that'll be up to them to pay the specials on that. They're aware that this lot was supposed to be there, so there's no surprise there. Um, and the park district will be responsible for paying specials on that lot.
Metal Lake has three projects that paid specials on $95,142 worth. And they have seen this memo at their last meeting.
Yeah. It doesn't look like it's been paid yet.
And that makes sense why...
Yeah.
That's three years before it goes down quick. So I'm assuming that's why nothing has been said for... And the developer just brought it up last week.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? This is, um, pretty much a formality that we need to go through, because it's cleaning up some of our... Some of the things we've got missed to the top.
Stuff that's been previously approved, but we just thought, instead of doing this one by one, just do them all together.
Yep. Okay.
Motion to approve the real property transfers.
Chelsea makes a motion. Can I get a second?
I can second that.
All right, Naomi does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Ordinance amendment. Barrett, you got this one?
Okay, yeah, if you wouldn't mind opening the PowerPoint presentation here. This is the presentation here. And, uh, if you could go to the second slide, please? Thanks. All right, so what you have before you is a staff application for a city ordinance amendment to the accessory uses and structures, uh, section of the zoning ordinance. So as you recall, uh, city council directed staff to bring this application forward. This was to address, uh, numerous complaints that we'd received from residents that, uh, they, uh, felt that our current requirements didn't really meet their preferences. Uh, we had a lot of feedback, took this to a lot of, uh, various stakeholders, did some research on various communities, and we brought forward a new proposal, uh, for accessory uses and structures regarding setbacks and maximum building footprint. Uh, so what we did is, we removed these requirements from the underlying zoning district, and we based it on lot size instead. Uh, and the purpose of doing that is that, so it actually meets the context of the site, rather than trying to stick a square peg through a round hole, uh, based on the underlying zoning district. So, as you'll see in the table on the left, uh, what we've done is, with our residential zoning districts, SR through R6, we have a minimum, uh, five-foot setback, and then setbacks are incremented, uh, by one foot for every additional, uh, 200 square feet, uh, over the 840 square foot, uh, minimum, uh, structure size. And then, as it creeps up to, uh, 3,000 square feet, you get a maximum setback to 25 feet. Uh, if you look at the table on the right, what we're doing here is, we're setting the maximum accessory structure size, the footprint. So it starts out at 8,400 square feet. Uh, uh, lot sizes are, have a 500 square foot, uh, accessory building, uh, maximum building footprint requirement. And then, it goes up from 8,401 to about three-quarters of an acre. Uh, you're allowed to have 840 square, uh, feet, and then it goes from three-quarters to an acre. Uh, and then after that, for every acre in, in size, we would allow for an additional 500 square feet for a maximum building size. So, uh, the, the hope is, with these requirements, is that it would kind of fit the size of the lot, rather than whatever zoning district it may have. So, if we have some legally non-conforming properties that have, uh, acreages or, or property, lot sizes that are under the requirements, this would address that issue. Um, and I'd also like to point out that this new requirement would actually allow for larger accessory structures than what we have right now. So, the, the idea is that larger lots would be able to have larger accessory structures. Uh, staff hasn't received any comment from the public, and, uh, staff feels that the proposal's in line with the conference of plan and meets the requirements of Section 1710. And staff recommends approval of the first reading, uh, as stated in the staff report. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Question. Um, your feedback I've heard so far is your, um, wall size, maximum wall height, sorry, um, at 14 feet, is that correct?
Uh, 15.
15?
Yep.
Okay. Um, was it just a number we picked randomly, or where did we come up with that one?
Uh, this isn't part of the, uh, ordinance amendment application. This was done prior, I believe, last year. Uh, the discussion surrounding that is that typically, architects, when they talk about accessory buildings, they're supposed to be complementary to a primary structure. So the thought process was, is that if we, uh, had a bulk height requirement, it would maintain a, a human scale element to the, the form of the building and look accessory to the, the principal structure.
So if somebody wants something bigger than that, they would have to apply for variance? Is there such a thing, I guess?
You could, possibly. Uh, we would probably discourage that, but it, there may be situations out there that I'm not aware of where that might arise.
I think with variance, is, uh, we pretty much determined that it has to be a pretty hard case to do, the variant change.
Harsh requirements of variance. Has to be something unique about your property that makes, that causes you to have a hardship to meet these requirements.
Okay.
So, you know, that, that may be the wall height. That's not the, that's not the... The roof height, correct?
Correct. So it's from, uh, grade to the highest member of the, horizontal member of the wall.
So you can still have a second floor. It would just be, um, like a bonus type room.
Yeah, no, that scenario would be measured to the peak, and then the peak couldn't exceed the height of the principal structure, as the quote is clearly written.
And the square footage is the footprint?
Correct.
So they could, you could still have more than 840 with your s- bonus room?
Right, you're still limited by your maximum lot coverage. So you, you could potentially have multiple buildings of that size.
Okay, are there questions on this one? Russ, did you have any feedback or anything on this that you'd like to share, or...
No, other than, I think we took, uh, three meetings to do this. So, um...
Yeah.
We beat this dead horse really hard. No, we, we...
I know, that's why, but I wish, if there was any other changes or something else you wanted to add to this discussion, that's why...
No, no, we... This wasn't the first iteration.
Okay, do you guys have any other questions on this?
One question to, uh, Brenton, did Matt on that? Um... Previous buildings that are already constructed are gonna be grandfathered in, where they might have a house, uh, where it's, right now it's just the accessory building on the lot. Is that correct?
That's correct. So if you were to approve this tonight, then the second reading, uh, two weeks down the road, that's when this would start. Everything that's already been established prior to the adoption of that ordinance would be legally non-conforming.
Okay.
However, we have not allowed accessory structures to be built prior to the house for years.
That's part of the city's ordinance?
Yes. Okay. Sarah, do you have any questions on this?
No, I do not. I was present for all the planning and zoning negotiations, and I'm pleased with these changes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions, or does that mean we'll look for a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, you still have to hold your public hearing for this one. I know it's...
No, it wasn't. Got it, okay. Well, we'll wrap that. For a public hearing. Anybody wanna make a comment on the amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Hang on, I gotta shut down the public hearing first, uh, Sarah. Going once, going twice. I'll close the public hearing. All right, Sarah, what did you wanna do?
I wanted to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Sarah makes a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's a delay usually. Sarah, you with us?
I am. I'm sorry, my network isn't coming in at all. That is an aye for me.
Got it, thank you. All right, the motion carries. All right, West Fargo School, second addition. Barrett, you got that? That mark was hanging around here somewhere.
Yeah, Steph, I'd like to ask that this be tabled. Uh, there's a delay in items that needed to be resolved before the application can go forward. So I believe the procedure is, we'd have to open a public hearing, and then, uh, move to table it to the next meeting.
Okay, is that gonna be enough time? If we gotta do a... You gotta do a publish with it, don't you?
Well, so...
Well, you...
The, the plan right now is for you to open the public hearing on your plat and then, and we'll continue it to the next meeting.
Yeah, then you're fine.
So we'll do that and all that. Okay.
The issue here is the, a transfer of property that is not going as quickly as desired.
Gotcha. All right, so let's open up a public hearing then on the plat. You wanna put them together, or you want them separate?
Just do them together.
Okay. All right, anybody have any comment on the West Fargo School, second addition, on the plat, where those vacation? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll just...
We'll just, just continue it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll just keep it going to next week, got it? Okay, and we'll continue to next week, or next time we all meet, uh, so we'll table where else to this lot. Okay. And we'll move on to number 11. Jimmy, you got this that one?
I do, Mr. Mayor and council. The first thing we have for you is water sewer, storm and street improvement district number 2021-5, Arrowwood, third addition. The developer of this, or the owner of this property has petitioned the city for public improvements to construct a residential, uh, single-family residences of 27 lots on Oracle Liberty Lane, west of 1017, south of Willow Court. Project will consist of sanitary sewer, eight-inch mains, six-inch services, and 48-inch diameter manholes, six and eight-inch water main, water services and fittings, six-inch hydrants, storm sewer in the sizes of 12, 15, 18, and 24-inch catch basins and manholes, storm water pond, a control structure, PVC underdrain for subgrade, for subgrade drainage, and clear water discharge, that would be where the some pumps connect in, and are conveyed to the pond, the two minutes pavement, streets, sidewalks, and, uh, s- street lighting, so... Cost, preliminary cost of this project is 1.2, no, 1.3 million dollars. It would be assessed to the property. The district, as you can see in the, in the, uh, report, is purely those parcels that will receive the benefit. You go down, whoever's running the controls. Going down, right there. So that is the location, and that is also the district boundary for this project. We do have, like I said, a petition for improvements signed by the developer, and he has been requiring about, uh, his agreement. Last page is a preliminary special assessment list based on the current methods that the city of course uses for assessments. Uh, they range anywhere from 36,000 all the way to s- 62-ish thousand dollars. So these are preliminary based on an estimated cost provided by their design engineer. Uh, once plans are received, we will review those for performance with the city standards, so...
Okay.
Uh, before I deny justice, to approve the preliminary engineering report, and then direct the engineer to prepare plan specifications. Russ, you have a comment?
Does this by any chance include a shared use path on Liberty?
It does not.
I would suggest that we include a shared use path on Liberty. Is that possible?
What's and why not?
It's a whole lot easier to do it now than to come back and do it later.
So isn't, uh, that isn't some sort of pedestrian way required?
This, okay, where you're gonna, correct me if I'm wrong, where you're gonna put this is outside the plat. We can't, we can't require, if planning is only, we can't require anything outside the plat to be done. The only other places we get to do, control this and planning zoning is when there's a street included in the plat. And that's...
Gotcha.
So... So I have to comment, as a citizen, request that you do this, because we're gonna want it someday.
For sure, I think that'd be wonderful, uh, because there isn't one on, on the other side.
Now, right now, it's going to be a, a shared use path to nowhere.
It will be. It'll be...
But that's okay.
On the west will be the railroad tracks, and on the east will be 1017, so...
Eventually, there, there, there may well be a shared use path on the railroad tracks.
Yeah. And there's not, you know sidewalks or anything in Arrowwood?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
No.
No, I think it, it'd be great to put that in for future planning. Was there any conversation about the buffer? Yet, or has the owner heard anything about that, that we talked about?
I believe that would come during the improvement district.
So, yeah, and I guess... My only concern is, we approve everything, and then they don't wanna do that. What does that even mean, you know?
We don't have the improvement district yet. The agreement, I'm, I'm getting at, the agreement, so...
Which I'm comfortable with. I mean, putting it there and having that discussion, then, for the most part, it's just, we're approving everything else, you know?
What type of buffer would you want to see there? Because I can always amend the report to include the shared use path. If they'll have to install a shared use path along Liberty Lane, and then install some form of vegetation or something along that, that west side, east side.
Personally, I mean, I think ideally, you know, something like what, what they have over Chestnut.
Well, at the berm.
Yeah, I mean, they have a berm with a fence, with some trees on it. Um, obviously, those, those fences are not maintenance-free what they put up, so, you know, how well somebody maintains those is questionable. Um, even without the fence, just getting some nice trees. A lot of people don't really understand what trees are good trees, and they plant a lot of bad trees. Um, so... You know, those are smaller yards, and getting some well-thought-out trees on a berm would be nice. A fence would be good.
Is there a right-of-way on the east side?
Yes.
For all this that you're talking about? That'd be my concern, 'cause you already approved the plat, so you don't have the right-of-way there to require it after fact. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, that's the concern. So we're just kinda getting stuck. So we're just kinda getting stuck. Because we already approved it, so you can't add on.
There, there might be space there, because there's a lot of space through Seventeen anyway, but I don't know how much space is the developers'. Because it's gonna cut into all those lots then if you're.
Right. I mean, I thought.
You say twenty-seven lots, you have that, like, six, eight, or twelve?
Yep.
I thought we brought that up at that meeting, so.
We talked about it, we talked about putting it in the ID agreement, which, you know, is fine as long as our doctor.
If it's a fence, that's not that big of an issue.
Could, could we do something, we, could we do something, we could do a fence or something like that? We could include that and that would be included within like the plan specifications, so you would be able to have that as a component within there. If there's room to do anything more, you know, that I think is something that we need to have a conversation with Cass County about. Uh, but it does look like the road right-of-way does widen out quite a bit compared to where it is up by the fire hall, for example, or trailer court. This area is significantly wider, it's just how far, how much right-of-way do you need? But I think that's a conversation that, uh, Jim and myself, we need to have with the county to see what their thoughts are too, since they have that right-of-way right now anyways, so.
Yeah, and I, I mean, when you're talking fence, it's gonna be six feet?
Yeah.
So that's pretty worthless, I mean, to hide anything, it's not gonna hide anything.
The drainage plan shows this area being raised to quite a bit to get drainage.
So I, I mean, I know we have issues with our fence heights and some of that other stuff that we're working through with the ordinance and. I know we have other areas that we would love to create some sort of, um, screen that now, you know, obviously, because it wasn't planned for in the beginning, if we want a screen, we have to go back and figure that out. So it's just tough to put this in and not really plan for some sort of screening.
But I think we were talking last time around, to the ID agreement and stuff like that is where we can address some of these things and not so much right now, but what we're discussing right here now. But I think too, you know, a fence would be good, like you said, if we have extra room, trees would be better, but I don't know. Isn't, I mean, when we get down there, doesn't Cass County have like a hundred and fifty, seventy-five on either side?
Uh, they have, a hundred and twenty roughly.
Is that what it is, okay?
A hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty, my line's not super straight here.
They've only got a pretty big swath there at one point.
Then what if we wanna approve, what if we wanna be talking about this when we approve the plat? Because, like they said, that you can't go back.
Well, okay, but I mean, we're, it depends on how much room we've got, and I still think, you know, if we're gonna do this, I mean, what we're talking about here, well, this is just for him to start doing the planning for the.
I know, but like for future, like, if we're gonna talk about trees or fences, shouldn't it be something that we bring out at that time then? Because if, then you're not allowing for the room for them on the, on the lots.
Steph, I'd actually prefer those comments before the meeting, uh, if you do have those preferences that you've forwarded to me, then I, I can bring it up at the meeting for discussion and then we can discuss with you.
So, you're, you're correct, the timing that you did it was when we were discussing the plat. I mean, so that, that, the process was followed and everything, it's just the discussion moved from requiring in the plat to in the ID agreement.
So I was just wondering if the owner was on board or if there was anything.
Correct, I don't think the owner knows anything about it.
We, we have not proposed ID agreement yet to the developer, but yes, what, you know, Lucas mentioning, that is appropriate in the discussions of the ID agreement. Is there room, depends on what all we're trying to accomplish here within it. If there's, there's a room for a fence, yes, there's a room for a fence, we know that. Could it be a taller fence? That's something we could find a way to do, you know, Jim could look at and we bring up to council. It might be one of those situations where you guys may have to grant something that's outside normal operations there. Uh, if you want taller, to be more effective that way. Um, if there is ability to do trees or different landscaping or something like that, that's where, within the plans and specifications, that's where Interstate would go through and see what they could do. Is there, like I was mentioning, we need to have conversations with the county, because we need to know, okay? Do, are, would they have concerns or issues with us encroaching that way into the right-of-way? That is saying that there's, now, we have a memorandum of understanding with the county that talks about transition and when that would be handed over to the city, odds are, the sizing of County Road Seventeen, especially in this area, they're gonna follow, rely on us to say what we would want in the future. With it being significantly narrower, just a couple blocks to the north, you're likely going to still be narrow. Even a future build-out of County Road Seventeen is still probably gonna be somewhat narrow, but like I said, we need to have that conversation with them. So what my suggestion would be is, Jim had that conversation when preparing plans and specifications. If you're able to amend that report at a later date to include that, so we know what we need to include or what can fit, what can't fit within this report, so we had to amend that report to reflect accordingly. That would be my suggestion, if it's good with Lucas and Jim, so.
Russ, go ahead.
Where, Jim, where is the shared use path on County Road Seventeen? Whose land is that built on?
Up, uh, north by the school?
Yep. Okay, so you see what could happen on the county road?
There is a, you do, there is a.
Some couple of separate things here with this, this shared use path, the time we're putting on county property, not on this developer's property.
No, it would be in the right-of-way of Liberty Lane.
Yeah, but don't, well, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding at the point that because it's, uh, a road right-of-way, doesn't mean things can't be put out with the county's approval.
Yeah, but what I'm trying to get back to is, is some of their recommendations that the council wants, if it's something that's going to take up property, my recommendation is to have that conversation, get that done during the planning phase, so you can incorporate any right-of-way or any of these features on the plat itself. The issue I think with, with that berm is there's a limited amount of space in this development to begin with, so I don't know if that would have worked regardless of the timing of it. You know, as far as how much is that berm gonna encroach on the property to then deal with any, any setbacks that you're gonna have with the home to the, to the backyard and stuff, I don't know how much space is actually there.
And I think that's, that's what my question was earlier, is like when Mr., when Mr. Mayor was trying to say, well, let's approve it at the ID agreement, should we be approving it?
Should have a discussion on it with the developer during the planning part of it.
Yeah.
Developer wasn't here, that's the issue we ran into, so we had this conversation then and I dropped that up.
And, and we're, I mean, this situation is gonna come up more often in the future, you know? Um, this is a, a very visible portion of our road, but even some of the backsides of, um, like Terra Gardens and some of those developments where people don't really go out there, but maybe down the road, that's something that we should have planned for is some, some sort of buffer. Um, you know, when you're driving down the road and just seeing backyard after backyard full of people's stuff that maybe don't always get maintained, what kind of presence is that for our community? So, um, you know, I think this is a really important topic to find a solution for that we can have moving forward in all, you know, backyards against our arterial roads. Um, and it's a little bit concerning, I guess, to me to just go for it and then hope that we can come up with something decent looking in the, in the end, is all.
I mean, is there a way that we can have the, like, require that when we approve for the plat? Can the developer be here so we can, like Barrett said, have these conversations?
Typically, the developer is here during those conversations, he wasn't here that night.
Okay.
For this one, it's not too late, we can still have discussions, we can still try to get something incorporated in the ID agreement. I'm just saying for future ones, I think that is the best time to do it for this type, type of stuff, is before you approve the plat, have that conversation. Then we can include it on the plat and in the ID agreement.
I think.
If, if it's right-of-way that's required, uh, that, like a berm isn't gonna be on the plat anyway?
Yeah.
Typically, typically landscaping aesthetics of the nature you're talking about, though, those are accounted for within the plans and specifications. If there's something that takes up land, like, like what Lucas is referring to, that's in the plat process. For this one, though, like I said, my suggestion would be is, you know, the engineer can go through the plan specifications, identify what they can do, what could be done in that area and what we can work with. Now, that could be the example, nice landscaping trees or something like that, which may accomplish what you're looking for. There might be the possibility of berm, I think that may lead to some drainage issues, but they would have to look at that because you're restricting the water, condensing it to where it can, can and can't go. Um, so, like, except for a lot of these situations, though, what you're referring to, like the aesthetics, the landscaping, things like that, that is identifying the plan specifications, plat, we're looking at lot lines, uh, overall general feel, but not into the weeds of what we're going to have.
Yeah, and I get, I get that.
You're using me because you're saying that, but the lawyer is telling us.
I know. He, he's referring to if you're going to take up more, you need to take up more land. I'm saying on this plat in specific, we can't go back to the plat, so let's focus on the plans, specifications in that area that we're working with. Can we accomplish some sort of screaming, screening? Yes, we can, it may be a fence, it might be a tree, you know, a combination of fence and trees or trees. But that's where we have our engineer when they're doing that, to, we rely on them to be able to do that, accomplish that. Uh, we did a lot, you know, like Lucas and Lucas is referring to, um, north, or maybe it was Russ there, where we did the bike path, we had that, we installed trees, we did some landscaping along that to give it a nicer feel.
Yeah.
That's very attainable in somewhere like this. We just have to have the conversations with the county because it is their right-of-way, we'd have to do that conversation anyways. So, that's what I'm saying is, let's focus on this plat, we can talk process, you know, later on, but I don't want to confuse anybody more of the planning process versus move forward just as plat situat, or this development, so.
Okay, other questions on this? Okay, so, any other change on this, Jim, with the approval of preliminary engineering report?
Well, do we want to include that path along Liberty?
I think we should.
Okay, and then the berm, we can discuss further, I'm good with that. So I'll amend the report to include, and, and to include shared use path along Liberty Drive, Liberty Lane, and then we'll address the buffer or berm fences, trees in the ID agreement.
And, not to confuse anybody, but the concern is just, we're spending the money on going through all these processes, so, it is an important conversation, you know, I mean, if the owner says, no, I'm not doing any of that, I don't know, he's not here, you know, so, that's the concern.
So for sure, we will inform him whenever we're going over the ID agreement to be here, which I would assume we should probably have this conversation soon, so the next meeting would be a good time to have that conversation with him and then we can work on the, a provision in the ID agreement to reflect the council's desire to put whatever council wants on the east side of the property.
Sounds good, and, um, I think whatever we do here, I mean, it's a step towards being consistent with everybody, so I think we do have to be cognizant or, you know, thorough on what we decide we want to push. I guess that's my thoughts.
Alright, anybody else got anything on that? So Jim, for, also just for the prepared plans and specs, you'll add that in there as well?
Yeah.
So, uh, any other questions on this, guys? Any other comments? Otherwise, what I'm gonna do is, we'll, we'll separate these out, uh, for eleven A, for motion to accept, and we're gonna have to along with the, with the just addition of path along Liberty. Okay.
Make a motion to approve the preliminary engineering report, path, uh, shared use path along Liberty Lane.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Anybody does a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's A, and we'll go to B. Um, direct engineer to prepare my specifications again along with the path along Liberty included.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to direct the engineer to prepare the plans and specs along with the shared use path.
Anybody makes the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, passes, alright, we'll move on to eleven B, which is the water improvement for District twenty twenty-dash-seven, Jimmy, you got that one?
Yes, so we have the plan and specifications for water improvement district number twenty twenty-dash-seven, this is the connection to Cass Rural. Uh, this project consists of a meter shift at the northeast corner of Sixty-third Street and Eighty-second Avenue. That is the dividing line, Eighty-second Avenue is the dividing line between the Cass Rural service area and the City of Porus service area. So this project consists of a meter vault installed at that point, transmission line down Sixty-third, east, west along Wall Avenue, down the Freed Park Galley, over to the water tower and connection point to the existing water tower, so. Uh, this project, our anticipated schedule, proposed schedule is approve of plan specs tonight. We advertise in the paper tomorrow, we open bids July twenty-ninth. August second, we award the project contingent upon funding. August twelfth is the State Water Commission meeting, we've already gotten the pre-construction funding for this project, so we're very hopeful that we'll get the remainder of the construction funds for it with the completion by the end of November of this year. So this is a, press, probable project cost is a little bit over one point eight million dollars. This is a, a eighty, seventy-five, twenty-five cost share split.
That's a little bit, seventy-five and not eighty.
I think it's seventy-five, twenty-five. I think it's seventy-five, twenty-five, it's a cost share on its own. Um, like I said, we went through the schedule, all we're doing tonight is we're approving the plans and specifications and directing the auditor to advertise for bids. So, this is the last cog in improving water quality and improving the, or in solidifying the sourced water for the expansion of the city, so.
Okay, anybody have any questions, comments on that? Okay.
Subcommittee does meet on Thursday prior to the State Water Commission meeting, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are you guys gonna listen on that?
We have a subcommittee meeting, we will be in on a subcommittee meeting, yeah.
I mean, it looks favorable, but it's just good to see with them.
Yeah.
Alright, so, I'll look for a motion to accept the, uh, Jim, what was it proposed again, I'm sorry?
Uh, we want to approve the plans and specifications and authorize the auditor to advertise for bids.
So moved.
Okay. Chelsea makes a motion, I get a second? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, we'll move on to twelve, Barrett, you got that one?
Number twelve, as you recall, two weeks ago, you heard, uh, an application for a plat and a zone change for Deer Creek Estates Edition, uh, looking down the northeast quadrant, the intersection of Deer Creek Parkway, Hundred Road Seventeen. Uh, this was an app, uh, second reading for the zone changes in front of you tonight to change the zoning from A agricultural to R six high-density residential. Uh, staff hasn't received any comments from the public and, uh, we recommend approval, that's stated in this document.
Like you said earlier, there's been no changes.
Correct, no changes.
So, I'm just gonna look for a motion to accept the rezone.
Make a motion to accept the.
I'll make that one.
Okay.
Okay, Sarah got it, Sarah made the motion, Jeff did a second. Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Sarah might have cut out there. Motion passes, move on to thirteen, same song and dance?
Thirteen, similar application, second reading of a zone change, uh, for Arrowhead Third Edition, uh, that you approved two weeks ago. Uh, you approved the first reading two weeks ago, the second reading is before you denied to rezone it from A agricultural.
Uh, you approved the first reading two weeks ago, the second reading is before you denied to rezone it from A agricultural to R three and R four. Uh, staff hasn't received any comment from the public, there's no changes, and we recommend approval of state in this staff report.
Okay, any, what do you got, any comments? I mean, again, no changes, so I have, gonna accept the motion.
Motion to approve the rezon.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
I have a second, Tab.
Okay, anybody does a second? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, so the next one I list here is, we have a hundred and fiftieth anniversary coming up here from what I understand. Looking through the history books, we're coming up on it. So, uh, we got two years to plan this thing the way it looks. Twenty twenty-three is what it's looking like, so, um, a hundred and fifty years of being around, there's been a lot of changes in town. There's also a lot of history that's gone on over a hundred and fifty years, so we're gonna start to have to put together a committee, I think. And Sally and I are probably gonna get started. I don't know if anybody else wants to join us initially, but just to kind of get a, get something started, and I'd like to try and have a kickoff meeting here sometime in August to get this started, see if we can get a steering committee together. There's a bunch of other committees that'll have to be formed, but we need a steering committee to get started, so. I will start spearheading that effort to get started, and I'll probably hand the keys off to somebody else here once we get going, but I'll get it started. If you guys have any comments or questions, or you know people that we would want to get on this thing. There's a lot of folks in town here that I know have quite a bit of history on the town here. We're gonna need to, uh, work with them and try and get as much information as possible. I know about seven or eight people that have quite a bit of knowledge on some history, and we do want to get them on. I'd like them on video if we could, but, uh, we'll see what we can do. Anyway, just a heads up, we got two years. We'll get the planning started, so. All right, that's all I got there. Liquor licenses, Brenton, go.
Hey, what this is for is liquor license for Rookry Rock Winery, I'm pulling this up. It's in regards to special events. Once a month here, July, August, September, I believe are the date, dates here. Yes, July twenty-third, August twentieth, and September thirteenth, September seventeenth. Uh, that's when we plan on having our food fest in Horace. That'd be evenings where we have food trucks, uh, farmers market type vendors, different folks to come to town. Wanted to offer that in the evenings for residents, it's easier for them to attend. Uh, Rookry Rock Winery, they came to our events last year that we had, when we had a farmer's market. Uh, they really liked Horace, they did very well for sales. Uh, and they indicated that they'd like to come back. In order for them to be able to come and sell their wine at different events or Horace, they have to have a special use or liquor license permit. So that's what they're requesting is liquor license permit for those three dates. Uh, and then they would also like to be here for Bean Days. Yeah, well, that would be the September one, I believe. No, in August, yeah. So they would want to be here for Bean Days also, not Bean Days. But like I said, they've indicated that they like being in our community, it's a special use permit. That's why I ask to come to council, all liquor licenses due, so.
They were here last year, did a good job. I have no problem with that, glad to see them wanting to come back actually.
And they have provided us with a copy of their liability insurance. Uh, and they do have their liquor license, uh, through the state of North Dakota. They also have to have a liquor license through there, and they do have that, so.
The, um, biggers have to pay for extra security for that night for Venus?
Typically, uh, we typically worked out with either biggers or the sheriffs. A lot of times we'll work with the sheriff's department, and it's paid through, through the Bean Days Fund if I remember correctly.
I don't know who's paying for it.
Yeah.
If, if they had to chip in it because biggers is paying for it?
Typically, biggers helps with supply, coordinating, having a constant, having like a street dance, and they'll coordinate getting the bands, and a lot of times help cover the costs for that. And they have in the past covered dinosaur defense security for it, but we've also coordinated with the sheriff's department to have a few extra deputies around. Because especially when there's liquor being served, you should have a deputy around, so.
Yeah, I think there's something about if we keep, well, there's no coolers allowed. I don't know if that makes difference, but, um, but as far as biggers goes, they are very helpful with, um, setup too and tables and all that stuff, and we're gonna, uh, have the band free admi, it's no admission, so families can come with their kids and don't have to worry about having to pay to get in. Get something, I, I think that's important for our taxpayers to be able to enjoy.
So do they help contribute? Yes, they do. As for security, line item wise, that is typically worked out just before Bean Days, so. Back on this liquor license request, like I said, mentioned it's July twenty-third, August twentieth, and September seventeenth, and Bean Days, so it'd be four separate permits, but they did all in one layer requesting.
Make a motion to approve the liquor license.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff does a second. Right, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, all right, truck permits, food truck permits.
Okay, this is another one here for you. By ordinance, we do bring these to the city council. Um, we bring these to you, main reason, so you're aware of what is happening in our community. Uh, we're hoping to have food trucks in town today, but they got rained out. We, we do plan on having these food trucks in town in, throughout July and August. Uh, as I mentioned, there's a horse food fest, which would be July, August, September in the evenings one day. So they, their license could be used for any of those dates. Top Dog and Soul Taco and Audubon have indicated that they'd be here for each of the dates in July. Uh, they haven't committed yet, my understanding for August, Sally, have they committed for August yet? Not yet, it's too far out for them. Detroit Deli has committed to the second two Tuesdays of July now. So we should have more food truck vendors, and we have some other ones that have interest in attending also, and working on details with them, so. Anyways, we have their applications for Detroit Deli, Top Dog, Soul Taco, and Audubon. Uh, we also have copies of their insurance, so they should be good there, and they'll afford the, permit would be issued. Uh, they would just have to pay their twenty-five dollar application fee if they haven't paid it yet. As I, we bring it to council, we want to make sure you know who is approved to be able to sell in Horace as a vendor for food, and create awareness of it, so.
Sounds good.
I was looking forward to them being here.
Yeah.
I'll take the ring.
Yeah.
It's a trade-off.
Yeah. Anybody got any discussion on this? I'm glad they're coming to town, so. Make a motion, we accept the permits, permit applications.
So moved.
Chelsea makes a motion, do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Anybody does a second? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Jim, you're up.
I am, so we'll do the, uh, construction project status report. We'll start Maple Lake Estates. Project is about ninety-six percent complete, the completion date was the end of last week, the end of June. The only thing that's remaining right now is private utilities electrical. The streets have been paved, curb and gutter, they've spread the topsoil, they've spread, they've, um, seeded, mulched. Uh, the only thing that's left, like I said, is the electrical service to the stormwater lift station, sanitary lift station, and, and testing those. Other than that, it's pretty much complete, so. The rain will set them back again today as far as some of that finished work is concerned, but I'm hopeful here in the next couple of weeks that that'll all get, get done. I wasn't able to follow up with our onsite guy today to see how much of the electrical they've got done. I know they were just putting the conduit last Friday when I stopped by out there to see if they pulled anywhere, I don't think they've pulled anywhere just yet, so. Southdale Farms first edition, we have a semifinal that went through, so that project will be finalized out here in the next month or so. Southdale Farms third, the underground is proposed to be complete here, anticipated to be complete within the next couple of weeks, so. That project is moving along at a pretty good clip. There, you've got two crews out there right now, there's potential for a third one coming out here the next week, so. Um, that means with the Lakeview Edition, they're looking at starting that here probably within three weeks. That's kind of where they're looking as hard as planning. Cup Creek, same thing on that, we're at a semifinal, semifinal, um, status, everything is complete, it's just a matter of going through the final documents, certainly.
On Maple Estates one?
Yep.
The, uh, low volume road on the south of my place between mile five and mile six. Is that gonna be seeded? The sides are not seeded?
It will be, yes. It will be seeded, yes. Anything that was disturbed, Joe, gets, gets seeded, so. Um, I will follow up on that. Hundred and fourth. But yes. Lost River Fifth, everything is complete except for the poles, like we talked about last time, they're a long lead item, so everything else is done, just a matter of putting them up and wiring the lights in along the pond. Lakeview, we talked a little bit about, Terragard is third, is supposed to start here within the next couple of weeks. As far, and the other important thing is we've started preliminary special assessment lists. I rephrase that, we've started compiling the project costs to prepare the preliminary special assessment lists that we'll be going through and starting that process relatively shortly. The city's working on the permanent bonding for those projects. We have the costs, and we're putting them together for that. Anything updated on the schedule on that, as far as when it could be with the permanent financing?
So that'll be, that's five projects that the city did last year, so we'll get permanent financing for those. Um, as soon as we have kind of final numbers from the city, we'll give those to Colliers, that we can get their final numbers to with the cost that, that the various agencies that the city utilizes to bonding, uh, what those will be, and then we can start those lists. I would like to get the list before the special assessment commission, uh, in August.
So the five projects Lucas talked about was improvement District two thousand eighteen dash one, which is the hundredth Avenue sanitary sewer line, two thousand nineteen dash seven, which is Maple Lakes Estates. Two thousand twenty dash one is Southdale Farms first edition. Two thousand twenty dash two is eighty-second Avenue, and two thousand twenty dash four is Lost River Fifth. So those projects are either complete or very close to be complete, so we can have a pretty accurate number of what our final project costs are going to be, so. Um, like Lucas said, we're gonna try to get the special assessment list out before, before August, so.
Good. All right?
That's all I have for you right now.
Sounds good.
All right, Jim?
Brett?
Okay. Um, just two items I have, one is Cory and Jeff and I have been working with Excel Energy about possibility of getting natural gas in some areas of town that do not have it. They're supposed to be providing us with a map identifying where properties are not serviced by natural gas currently in city limits. That way, we can find out what areas, neighborhoods need it. We can either do a survey or work with Excel Energy to identify the interest of getting natural gas there. I know, uh, Jeff has been working with his neighborhood, talking with the residents there to find out if there's interest of it. Sounds pretty positive. They've given us a general cost estimate, we can refine that down as we know more of how many people are truly interested in doing that. So that is one area that we're looking at, and the, the other areas will follow as we get that map from Excel Energy. Um, and then we're able to, like I said, reach out to those neighborhoods. If, we have not figured out if it would be a, if the city could help cover that cost, or if it would be a, um, residents would have to pay through Excel Energy to participate in that or not. There's some issues that we're working through on that to see what's possible. Um, either way, I know some neighborhoods have been, or like Jeff's neighborhood, they've been very interested with us. Uh, so we're excited about that. We're hoping that the turnout time could be fairly quick on some of these spots too. I can't speak for Excel Energy, but they indicated for like country acres area that isn't serviced, since they're already going to be down Maple Lakes, what they're hoping for too is to be able to get something to happen around the same time that their crews already be down there. The other one I had is finance director position, just heads up that has been posted now, so that is out there. We're taking resumes, if you know anybody interested, pass it on, let them know. We encourage them to reach out to the recruiter, the recruiter firm, just a reminder, is Baker Tilly. And we want to make sure that folks are directed to the recruiter for any questions or anything. That way, if the recruiter doesn't know, they can reach out to us and correspond that way. We want to make sure that we keep that communication in that, that manner, so. Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. All right, on portfolios, so a couple of things I've got, uh, a couple of weeks ago here, the Lions Club did a parade through town here with the kids underneath their banners. I think we had about fifty or sixty cars show up for that. Didn't have all the kids because we were a little far beyond graduation, but it was still, we had some of them out there, so it was still kind of fun to go around, acknowledge them, so I'm glad we did that. At some point here, I suppose we'll put down the banners and get to the kids, I don't know when you guys have planned to do that, but I'd think pretty much anytime now would be fine to take those down, we'll get them to the kids. The thing here last Wednesday, yeah, last Wednesday, we had a chamber event. Uh, we pretty much had everybody who was in a leadership position in the cities, the schools, business. Uh, we're at a chamber event, we were talking about the workforce shortage that's currently going on. They're saying, there's always been a workforce shortage, there's always gonna be a workforce shortage. The problem is it's a more acute now because of the pandemic. Figure out what we can do as a metro to try and track more, uh, basically workforce in here. I think one of the things that, uh, that we talked about a little bit was that we have, uh, a lot of workers that are gonna be moving into the area here to work on the diversion over the next few years. Perhaps their spouses will come along, we don't know how, how that's gonna work, but we promote the area and at least, uh, use that as an angle as well, so. Anyway, it was a good event, I'm glad we, you know, sat through it, had three good speakers that kind of laid out a interesting, where the metro compares to some other metros around the country with different things. We have a younger demographic, which is good, and we have a lot of, uh, baby production in the area, which is good, compared to some of the other areas that we're dealing with, so. But yeah, we still have our issues too with the, with workforce shortages, and so. There's gonna be follow-up on that, there'll be some more roundtable discussions that we're gonna have on that, but that was a good, good thing. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to mention is on the Fourth of July, there was great fireworks displays. Kudos to everybody that put those together, and I don't think there was any incident in town that I have heard about anyway, so. Good, just have more of them next year. All right.
That's awesome. Actually, I heard quite a few people say, man, we should have came out to Horace. I heard it was a great, great event, so that's really cool. Um, I just wanted to encourage anybody in the community, um, if they're interested in, um, going on the Bean Days website, they can definitely go on there and make sure that they're signing up for the parade or any events that they want to participate in. So definitely do that, and then, um, the schedule, um, is coming along on there too, I believe, right Sally? Yep. Um, and then I do have a question, um, um, for you Brent. Or whoever over there in that corner. I had, a resident had mentioned that, um, the, there's some very high speeding traffic, um, right on this road out here. If it's not posted, is it twenty-five or what?
If it's not posted, it'd be twenty-five.
Okay.
Residential streets, I think that's a centrical thing.
So for this, these newer developments going that way, the traffic coming on this road is going like thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. Um, there are lots of kids on our road, so I don't know.
You're talking on park here?
Yep.
Okay, so what we, what we do is bring it to their, I'll bring it to the deputies' attention, so they're aware of it, and encourage them to pay attention to that area a little bit more.
Yeah, that would be great. I just, um, it, it's getting really kind of crazy the more they're building out there, you know, the cars are kind of speeding through, because there's, it's a straight shot, so.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it?
Cory, don't forget Sarah.
I know, I was just gonna say.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Sarah, go, Sarah, you got anything you want to add here?
No, it's been, uh, pretty dippy, um, down in Texas here. Had several good tenants with residents and whatnot, and I know that, uh, worked through the rest of our annexation. The zoning's going very smoothly, so. Worked through the rest, I am a safety, the zoning's going very smoothly, so I don't have anything additional to add today.
Alright, sounds good, we'll have a safe trip back, okay, um. Chelsea?
Um, I just wanted to bring a little bit of awareness to uh, the permit process. Um, I work with a lot of these contractors and owners that are doing projects out here and. They get extremely stressed out with our permit process, um. You know, for a fit up, they're waiting eight weeks and, you know, if you can imagine, they're spending the previous eight weeks going a hundred miles an hour planning. Getting their subs lined up, doing, you know, getting everything done to then, because you can't submit without having everything in order, then having to sit and wait and wait and wait and people get. Very stressed, um, there's a lot of, you know, people have their livelihoods into these projects, contractors have a lot of, um, a lot of weight into these projects. It's extremely stressful, um, our staff is, is extremely, um, you know overloaded, it's. Difficult for, for things to um, run smoothly because of how much they have going through their systems and how many uh, emails. You know, people are free to email as much as they want, um, coordinating emails and knowing what's come in and what's gone out. Um, so I, I just wanted to bring awareness to that, I want to have a, to keep continuing that conversation about what we can do. To streamline our process, um, and, and make sure that, that uh, we're, we're doing what we can. You, you know, I know everybody's working very hard, so.
Okay, alright, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, Jeff?
Um. The day before Cory had his meeting with the chamber, I dragged right into another meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, to talk about the housing shortage issue in the area. Um, they have another meeting scheduled on July thirty, or thirteenth at seven AM, um. Sure everybody's excited, really wanna jump in on that one, we'll take volunteers, take our spot if you want. Um, but uh, other than that, um, I don't know, I have a lot, so that's it.
Uh, that will be Eggs and Issues event from the chamber, so, uh, they're gonna be talking about housing and. Our understanding that we got at that meeting was in regards to. Housing stock and here, overall, is there a housing crisis or not, is their overall question. Um, it seemed to be they were looking more from a staff perspective, uh, so I'll be working out with Councilman Trudo. Who would be best to go from it, you know, ourselves, either himself or myself or Barrett, um, but I've been talking to Barrett about it too today, so. Yeah.
Alright, okay. Anyones, Jeff?
That's it.
Okay, alright, yeah, Lucas, we got the. Update here, so.
Yes, we'll go into an executive session, so if you wanna have a motion from the council to close the uh, regular meeting.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Chelsea makes a motion, Jeff does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so, yep, we're gonna need to clear the room and.
Give us a few minutes.
Give us a few minutes.
Give us a few minutes.
Yeah.